Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, and we want to certainly thank everyone for coming tonight. We've got some real special guests with us, and we'll just get started. So, thank you all for coming. Let's have our pledge of allegiance, and then brother tight pleapers come out of your vacation. And I'll ask Tim to release their pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, give them. Father, amen. We're thankful for this day and all the blessings of it, and the occasion that brings us here this evening. Father, we're thankful that we have many freedoms that we do at all the levels of our government. Father, we're thankful that we can have such a say in matters pertaining to our local communities and in our local government. Father, we're thankful for those that serve us in disrespect. Father, we're thankful for our mayor and our council, and all those that participate in these meetings from time to time. Father, we pray that you will help us to do our best to represent all of our citizens. Help us to realize that there are many that are disadvantaged, and that there are those that don't have the voice that others do. And help us always to realize that our goal is to represent everyone and to give everyone a voice in the doings and the goings-on in our community. Father, we pray for our council members and our mayor tonight as they enter into their business. Father, help us to always assume the best, while realizing that we all love our community, we all love this area. Father, help us to assume the best in everyone's motives and conduct the business tonight in a way that would be pleasing in your side, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you coming. First time on agenda will be a recommendation to approve a maintenance from our last meeting. Would there be a motion to do that?
How much motion?
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, great. Hall and favors say aye. Number three will be a recommendation to approve our council's payable bills. Would there be a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion with a first.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Okay, Liam. Any discussion on those? Hall and favors say aye. This time, Mr. Jordan or Carter, would you please come forward first, or have your swearing in? I know this is a special night in the community. You've got some family and special guest week, so I'll let you and Judge Howell.
Who's somebody who's been, Jordan, somebody who's been there with?
She's gone. She's gone.
I'm sorry for your time. Congratulations. I repeat, I appreciate you. I, Jordan Carter.
I, Jordan Carter.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
As long as I am a citizen thereof.
As long as I'm a citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
And that I will faithfully and honestly.
Discharge all duties required of me.
Discharge all duties required of me.
To execute.
To execute.
Oppose.
Oppose.
And enforce.
And enforce.
All federal.
All federal.
State.
State.
And local laws.
Local laws.
As the duties of a police officer.
As the duties of a police officer.
For the city of Hamilton.
For the city of Hamilton.
Police department.
Police department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So have you.
So have you.
Congratulations, Jordan. Do you have any pre-6 outcome tonight, also? Big deals. Before we get into the budget, I know Allen is going to throw a bunch with his district committee, but I know that Larry has to be somewhere 6:30. So, Larry, if you would, I've got a recommendation to hire Tyler Cantrell as a part-time worker at the Regulation Center. Tyler's ready to pay at least $745 an hour. Is that your recommendation?
Yes.
To the hospital? There be a motion to approve this?
Hire.
How much? Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Hall and favors say aye. Thank you, Larry. I know you have a rest of time. Okay. We went on the budget just a few minutes ago, a little bit, but I would like to ask Allen if you would. Allen, if you don't mind, just kind of give us an overview again, because the public will know what they, the paper will know what we're doing. Kind of hit some highlights if you want to. Any questions at the council hours, we can address those if you're concerned.
We use our budget as a framework to go by. It's something that when we budget these accounts, we base it on what we spent last year. We also base it on any increases or decreases that we know are going to happen this year. And I think, Tim, you mentioned about the pay. We've got some 7 and 4 cent gas money that is not included in that budget, this budget. It's money that we have a few accounts that are not in the general fund, and they're used for specific purposes. And that money can be used for some of those items, but we've not included any. If we have a project that's bigger than those, the monies in those accounts, we would have to look at our general fund to make the difference, or borrow money and pay them off later with either general fund money. So, this has our general fund revenues and general fund expenses. We also have a capital projects fund that we use that's not budgeted here. There's some equipment items y'all have paid, that we get from the state every year. Paid for some equipment items out of those accounts before. That's not in our general budget. Also, one thing about the accounting software, if there's ever an account that you see on our financial statements that you have a question with what exactly is in that account, and we've had a few before. Because sometimes the account description is, we use a chart of accounts, and maybe we need to look at the account description to make sure we describe them in an adequate way where we know what it is. But if you ever have a question, we can go to our software and run you every expense that's in that particular account. If you have a question about it, we can go to our computers and run it out. Every one of them, for instance, the last year, if you have an account, we discussed, you know, some fire department expenses and so forth. Well, we can actually run those accounts, show you everything that was in that account, five accounts. So, if you ever have a question, that's what our accounting system's for, so we can get you that information. It may take Angela a day or two to go in there and run it out, but we can do that for you. This year's budget, we have budgeted for our general funds and for our operating funds, which is our fire, police, regulation, library, and street. Six million and 398,050 worth of revenues. For those same departments, we've budgeted six million, 383,451 dollars in expenses. A surplus of over $14,000. As you know, we had one decrease in revenue that we have from the county that we're not going to get as much this year. That cost us $162,000 decrease. Last year's budget was six million, 439,000 in revenues. Budgeted in six million, 219,000 in expenses. So, we budgeted a $219,000 surplus for last year, and we came in at $420,000 surplus. So, we actually did better than budgeted. And the reason we did better than budgeted is because we use this as a framework. Some things are going to come up that we didn't budget for, that we can't expect. Something's going to come up year in a year. A piece of equipment's going to tear up. An employee retires that we weren't expecting, whatever, and we have to hire employees or replace that equipment. But we also don't have to spend everything in this budget there. They still come up and request equipment items that you have to approve. You have to go through your, if they want to, just because we put an extra person in the budget, they still have to come before you and go through our process that we use to hire people, and you have to approve it. But this framework has served us pretty well. It served us well. Last year, we had a surplus which was higher than what we budgeted. And like I said, if there's any accounts you have a question about, at any time, you know, not just tonight when you look at this budget, but if next month, if you were looking there and saw an account you didn't understand what was in that account, we can show you exactly what's in there year-to-date, and then what was in there last year. So, that's how we use this as our framework. Like I said, it's served us well, and that's why we have some reserve money in our general fund. It's because we do spend a lot of time budgeting, making sure that if we have a certain amount of expenses, we're going to have enough revenue coming in.
And I appreciate Allen going on through this, and that we stay in touch with a lot of our council members. I think it's, you know, good stewards, it shows we've been good stewards of taxpayers' money. And we've not, you know, when you're coming way ahead of budget like we have, it shows that we're watching, we're watching the pennies. You know, even though it takes a lot of money to run this, this evening. But Allen and I talk at least once a quarter and go over, make sure we're staying within, watching what we do. And I commend the employees and the supervisors we have, just because they have something in their budget. Say for instance, they have $50,000 or $70,000 for equipment. That doesn't necessarily mean they're going to spend or be in that equipment. They just have to have a number to go by. We still have to approve that number. Some things we may go over in, some things we may go under. So, I think that's how we come up with positive at the end of this past year.
And Angela runs a financial statement every month that we do, yes.
And the supervisors get a copy every month, so they'll know in their own department how they're running on supplies, and how they're running on equipment, or how they're running on, you know, things that they have in their budget to spend. They'll, there's any time they can see what's left. And we get a copy, too. The council gets a copy.
Yeah, and I'm sure she has this monthly bank reconciliation, and to see how the sales tax runs month-to-month, and the lodging tax, and the occupation on business, and alcohol tax, and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, I can remember, what, three years ago, we didn't have our best with this. So, it's refreshing to have, to know what we've done, what we've done.
We also have a water department budget.
Right.
Yes, it's right behind. Yeah, I got a copy of that, too, Allen. I think the revenues was two, $2,673,000. And the expenses, $2,672,000, pretty close to budget on that. But again, last year, we came under that budget also, so we were good in both departments.
So, that just shows you, you add those two together, you know, eight or nine million dollars in our regular operating budget, which is everyday operations, salaries, revenues, salaries, expenses, supplies, you name it. That's how big an operation, you know, that city is, considering the water department and all the city department.
Can I ask you one question? The sales and occupational is something everybody always asks about this time of year. How did that, how is that running? How does that run this year?
Occupational tax last year is actually a little less than what we budgeted, I think. I think we budgeted $985,000, and came in actually on $916,000. The sales tax was, uh, sales tax, right, I think. We budgeted $2,750,000, and it came in at $2,758,000. So, we've hit that pretty close. And like I say, overall, when you add all the, all the revenue together, some of it does come in a little more than what we projected. Some of it may come in a little bit less than what we projected. But still, to the end of the year, it was way ahead, so I'm thankful for that.
Allen, you said we was getting cuts off from that hospital tax. Scott, could you tell us?
Yes, go ahead, Scott.
What deal is on that?
He can explain better than I can.
Sheriff, briefly, it's not a hospital tax anymore. The county collects 2 cent sales tax, and a portion of that sales tax is distributed out to municipalities. Depending upon how that money is paid, depends on the value, the amount of money that goes to municipalities. The county has historically been paying the percentage out to the municipalities first. And in retrospect, the county should have been paying another payment first. And that affects the number that, and they talk about a percentage, it affects what comes to municipality. And so, the state auditors recommended, in fact, to the county, to go back eight years to recapture the extra money that had been paid to municipalities. So, for, I think it's a period of eight months, starting in June or July of last year, that'll go through maybe March 2016. The county's recapturing the extra money that had been paid over to each of the municipalities. And then in March, they'll start with the proper calculation, which going forward will mean Hamilton and the other municipalities will draw a little bit less than what they had been in the past, but it'll be very similar to the traditional numbers that we've been saying, like what we budgeted last year. But the hit was basically with the first, the last part of last fiscal year and the first part of this fiscal year.
So, you're saying after this is paid back, we're going to get close to that 35,000?
It's going to be very similar, yes.
At least they didn't go back eight years. They went back just to, trying to improve just a little, looks like. Because it did start a couple of months ago, I think.
Yeah, and that's obviously been a detriment to Hamilton and some other municipalities. Probably more so than some other municipalities than even, maybe Hamilton, Hamilton can absorb it a little bit better than some others.
Yeah.
Is that based on population, or?
Yes, ma'am.
Of the cities?
50% of the money that gets dispersed goes to municipalities, and it's based upon population.
I see.
So, Hamilton gets a little bit more than that.
That won't affect us then too much when we get back up to that, get that paid back, and we get pretty close to that 30?
That's what we budgeted for the last six months of the fiscal year. We did take a hit in the first, in our budget for the first six months, but at least it's coming back after six months. It's going to hurt us.
And we would have probably been more than 400 ahead prior to September, because we haven't gotten that money in. I probably June, July.
Right, it's already started before this.
We should have been close to another $100,000. And we still wind up with $1,000 ahead, so it does, it is going to hurt, but it's not as much as we do in some other small towns that, depending on that, a lot closer budget than we are.
It's a one-time, right?
Yeah, it won't happen again. Once this is over, we'll go back to normal. My understanding from Allen is that right, Scott? Or close to.
Yeah, it's not going to be that exact number, but, I'm sorry, I don't have those numbers with me, but it's going to be, it's often close to lifeless.
If the council is okay with the budget as presented, would there be a motion to accept it? Or do you want, is there anything you want to talk to Allen about and do it in a couple of weeks? I don't think the numbers are changing. The next two weeks is still just a format to go by, so I'm just willing to do whatever you want me to do. I'll make the motion to accept it as is. Do you want to make a motion, Francis, second? Any other discussion? Hall and favors say aye. Thank you all very much, and we're like a month into our new year already, so let it give them time to go back, get us back on track. Number six is a recommendation to hire Joyce Dugelak. I guess is the, Dugelak is a van driver for the Hamilton Senior Center. Ms. Dugelak will work 25 hours per week for $9 per hour, and her starter rate, as her starter rate of pay will be starting actually tomorrow. She's paid through NACO through the day, so tomorrow will be when she goes on our payroll. And like I explained in the work session, this will be to deliver the meals daily. We really agreed to do this, when we agreed to take the van, this was part of the agreement, because they would have been cut out had we not done it. And I think the senior meals, or homebound meals that are taken out daily, it's very important for our community. And Joyce does a great job at the senior center, and this would be continuing that program. It's just us paying her instead of NACO paying her. And we did get the van today, by the way, and all we got to do is probably get it striped or lettered. I think it had the NACO on the side of it, and they come guided to, to the wreck center today. They brought it this morning from Florence. It's a nice looking van, good shape, everything on it's checked out, it's been well taken care of. Our job is to maintain the van, keep it insured, and it can be used for any other projects. I mean, say for instance, the seniors want to go to Tupelo or Florence, or some kind of event, they'll, they'll do that. The city can use it as we want, since it's our van.
She's entitled to.
Yes, we got the title and everything. Angela gave it today. She's working on getting it transferred today.
Is there only one effect of a NACO?
No, many cities. We're not the one that give a van to. And they offered up, they wanted to give a couple of cars to some folks, but they felt like, one of the reasons 10 is our senior center is the most successful center in all of NACO. Actually, Hamilton has the biggest, most successful senior center, and they're holding five counties.
I see, we take, is it 46 meals that are taken out daily?
And there's about chances there, there's at least 40, 45 a day that eats in there. So, there are close to 90 folks a day being fed, so.
Okay, we cover, we insure all of these people?
That's it. We got, we descend all the information today. All we have to do is agree to keep, keep paying the help to deliver the meals.
Those people up there are so excited, because with NACO, they couldn't go across the state lines. I understand, but they can now, they got our chief of.
And Joyce actually would just be transferring from their payroll dollars. She makes a little bit more, I think, $9.10 an hour, but I told her nine was what we paid her other help, so she said nine will be fine. So, I would like a motion to approve her and Joyce.
I'd like a motion with her. Because she does other things other than, I've seen her, senior center, other things than just driving. She's a real asset.
Okay. Francis made a motion, would there be a second to approve this?
I'll say it.
Thank you, Liam. Any other discussion? Hall and favors say aye.
Aye.
Number eight is a recommendation to appoint Melinda Sherrill to the zoning board for a four-year term. Her term will expire in August of 2019. We still need a couple more board members to let them, let them serve, and I asked her this afternoon, and she said she was glad to. As you know, we appointed Mr. Jim Will a few weeks ago, and unfortunately, Jim was not able to serve after having an accident. And I know he was looking forward to it, because I spoke to him about it, and so we need to replace that performance. And I still need some more, if y'all find me somebody. But I do, we'd like to have a motion to approve Melinda this time.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Francis, hall and favors say aye. Thank you very much. Number nine, I think you have a, in your packet there, there's three bills that Andrea and I sent to different painters. Two new sons, professional painters, and then we kept some local, Chris was, and Ben Hubbard is a local painter that bided on it. This is to approve painting outside of the new sea hall. They all three bill the same thing. As you can see, Chris and Ben Hubbard's is a little less than theirs, $16,500. This is paint, wash, scrape, and remove the old paint that's needed, re-glaze windows. There's a lot of prepping that goes involved in this. This is just one step of getting the exterior done. The roof is finished this past weekend, I think, so everything is good. Once we get the outside done, and then I think Andrea's sent y'all an email today to give you an update on the inside. She's working on something that we can get some bids on to do the inside work. But this will be to finish the outside, and this local painter here has got this bid. Talked to Chris today, and they can start probably a few weeks before they can get to it. But his was the longest bid, and so there'd be a motion to give him this bid, casing custom homes.
I'll make a motion with.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Hall and favors say aye. Thank you very much. Number 10 is a recommendation to approve a resolution presented by Al Diamond Department of Transportation. We got a copy of this. This is the resurfacing. The state's going to do this. They just sent this to me, and I have to give two copies, sign them, and send them back to Mr. Brown. Just approving the resurfacing project on 278 here Ragstale Avenue toward Robbins Road and Industrial Drive to west of Canada 57. It's really just giving permission to the city to let the state do this project. There's nothing, no cost to us. It's their project. They have to have a resolution passed by us in order to proceed with it. And I gave y'all a copy of this, too, if you want to look at it. I'm looking forward to getting that finished. This is part of the process of getting, finishing up this, this project for the state. Very thankful that they're doing this work. And I think the repaving of the highways and the bridges that are being installed on 278 and 43 South. The state's paid quite a bit of money in handling it, so down the road, it's going to be very beneficial to us.
I'd like a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
Francis made a motion, Greg, second. Any discussion on that? Hall and favors say aye. Scott on ordinance 497 in regards to unkept properties. I think Marla and I have met with Scott and talked to him, and wanted to amend our ordinance 497. The reason is, sometimes we send letters out to properties that are not being kept up. Sometimes they have grass and weeds, waste half, and some, you know, if we send a letter, they have some other days to do something, then they don't do it, and it comes back, and this drags on sometimes two or three months. What we'd like to do is put a little teeth into it, so after due time, either we could have do it or get them approved, contractors clean the property, and the property owner has 30 days to pay the bill, not the city can put a lane on the property. It's really, and it's not that many, but it does happen. And Scott, would you want to address that, any, if there's anything you're concerned, because you, you're aware of this, so would you address it?
That seems to be the issue that Marla keeps running into, is, of course, we can bring them into court for valley 497, but the length of time it takes, it's an issue that we've had with certain property owners. She wanted a little more teeth to it. And this would at least give us the option to go ahead and put the lien on the property, to at least have something there. Of course, it doesn't mean that we collect just because we put the lien on it, but to at least have, have some potential remedy to get our money back on it and to get the property cleaned up instead of just dragging on. It's a, still something where we have to use our judgment about.
And it may not need to be done once or twice a year, but we just need the option to do it in case, because we've been very lenient. Most property owners, like I say, they get a summons to come to court. They may or not, and then they get another time to do it. And this just keeps going on and on and on. And this way would give us a chance to hopefully get some of these problems solved.
Yeah, the majority of the issues easily gets resolved. But there's, you know, a couple of landowners specifically that we've had some issue with, you know.
So, but you're not adding that there, it just says written notice? So they can always say, I didn't get it. So shouldn't we add that it's a certified letter?
Yeah, that's how it would have to go.
Okay, so, so what this says here isn't exactly what's going to be put in there. It will say certified letter instead of just written notice?
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll give them basically legal notice to make sure that they have the project.
And then it says fourteen days written notice. So fourteen days from the time that they get their certified letter, they're either going to have to clean it up or make contact and make some arrangements?
That's correct.
So are you going to fill in all these gaps or is it just going to be an assumption?
I was going to clean it up a little bit, let up from the way it is here. But basically what we're going to do is give them written notice, fourteen days notice, which is what we have to give them anyway. And if we don't hear, hear from them or have some arrangement made, which will be up tomorrow, then we're going to go out there and clean it up or at least have that option.
And the only difference is before it said that we may and now you're saying we will.
Scott, could we not have the letter handed over? Police chief or something like that?
That was in here. But it was, there's a whole bunch taken out, but.
He has been, you can, you can, you can speak, you have been to multiple homeowners personally, knocked on the door and held them. And, you know, so I know it does happen.
Yes, sir. I'm going to do an oral and then give them a few days to start some sort of notion of port cleaning up. And then if nothing started, then I come back to see Marla, get a written notification. And when I make contact with the individual, when I place it in their hands, I notify her that she notates the date and the time that they were given and they're on the clock.
So you're going to clean it up to be something for, to read before we vote on it?
I can do that, yeah. Yeah, we can do it next meeting, don't we?
Because we need to, and especially, I mean, I talked about two different things in the last two weeks, so we need to make sure that the city's following through. And if we're only going to give them fourteen days, we need to make sure that we've done it in fourteen days because.
We, we can, two weeks is not much difference on this because it's getting out of grass growing season anyway. But what we need to do is just get something with some teeth in it that's going to work. We've actually been extremely lenient. I mean, I mean, we've been overly lenient, I think. And we tried to be strict, but, you know, sometimes you just, things fall through the cracks and that's what kind of helped us not to let it be that.
That is one of the, one of the, I want to say it's the most, but it's one of the most frequently discussed issues when you talk with people because it devalues the property. You know, you have nice homes and you've got a neighbor that has no pride and, you know, you can be purging their pride, so.
Well, that's something that Marla deals with all summer, every year.
And there's just some areas that we absolutely have got to get cleaned up because it's a, it's a black eye on the whole city.
This would apply to both commercial and residential areas.
Yes.
And Scott, if you want to redo this, that'd be all right with me?
Sure.
We can just skip forward to it if you want to make sure it's.
There are only twenty-five sections to this ordinance here. You can't just pick out one and force, if you don't enforce all this other here. I mean, that's not being done either. There's, there's a bunch of, bunch of other things in there that's being done. It's not being enforced. So, I mean, we can't just pick out, I'm, I'm cleaning up property, but you don't have to go by all of it. You can't just pick out one of the sections and let the other go away with them one.
Well, how about just looking over the whole ordinance and letting me know what your changes will be? And we'll address it that way.
Well, I think, I think the ordinance is good that it, we've got now plus what Scott's going to do. But I just think it needs to be in the fore.
Well, they got to be caught during, you know, and that sometimes in the fore, I can see, I can see all these things that I'm sure happened, but.
Oh, yeah. Is there anything else? Anybody else? Oh, Ryan, can you address something that? Each year, we send out a notice to the public in the water bills this time of year explaining the exemption of garbage. It's not really through the city, it's through the health department, is that right?
Correct.
But it comes on the water bill and then come January, there's always a few that says, hey, I'm not supposed to be paying garbage. But we tell what we want the public to know, the ones that are exempt, they still have to each and every year fill out the forms necessary to be exempt.
Each year, they have to renew their exemption through the health department. You have to go down to the health department, pick up an application and fill it out, have it authorized. And you can bring it back to the water department or to the health department, get it in one. But you have to go pick it up, pass the health department, they issue the application.
And y'all put it in the water bills in November, December?
We started in October, November, December. That, that you have to go back and recertify every year and it has to be turned in by December fifteenth.
Right. But come January fifteenth, when the bill comes in, there's, seem like there's always a few that they didn't get it in the mail or they don't remember.
We always have a lot of questions on who's exempt and who's not exempt. In order to be exempt, you have to be, your only sole income is social security. You can't have any retirement or any, any other income besides that coming in to be exempt.
Alan, would you explain it because I knew, that way it can have it in the papers so people will know that they didn't renew it each year. Some people will forget, you know. And honestly, they forget, they're not trying to cause problems, but they will forget. And then they'll get a bill in January that causes a lot of headaches at that time. It's supposed to be done in January and December.
Is that a city, just a city exemption?
That's a county option, it's a county, it's a state thing.
County-wide, the way to get that exemption?
They're with the county garbage. They're with the county garbage. They have to sign binding files to pay.
The state's the one that requires to have to renew it every year before it goes through to.
But it applies, it applies county-wide to just the city?
Actually, state-wide, I think.
State-wide.
My only reason for bringing it up is so people would maybe watch and draw their memory to get through. Because even though you have to in each year, they'll say, well, I shouldn't have to do it every year. But it's not really our, it's not our law, it's the, it's the state. But I want people to be aware. Shannon gave you a notice here. Next Tuesday, November the tenth, Bebel State Community College Veterans Day Celebration. Speaker Patrick Franks will be there from twelve to one at the Bebel State Community College and will make that announcement on behalf of the city. Also thank those that were involved this past weekend for Hampton Fall Fest. It was a, a very good fest. The weather kind of hampered us a little bit, but I thank all those that put a lot of hard work into that. Hopefully next year we have a, a better weather. I think we have a better turnout, but it was still pretty successful, I think. I know a lot of folks worked hard on that Friday night and Saturday holiday. And our city workers, Mike had several guys there, most of the day, Saturday, picking up garbage and making sure everything was clean. And I appreciate that, Mike, having those crew there.
Well, they got lots of things cleaned up before it started too. Made it all look nice, we appreciate that.
And they also have changed the playoff game. They're going to play Thursday instead of Friday.
Okay, yeah, we need to make that announcement, so.
Say seven o'clock, we're at the same time usual.
Just, just coming Thursday instead of Friday, Hamilton being traveling to Price. So move that game up from Friday to Thursday, if anybody's watching and wants to know. Okay. If there's not anything else, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Great, thank you. Paul in favor, say aye. Thank you.